Thank you. I'm sorry to. She's burning from the food on the table. Is it second? We want to do second. Your call.
Third person.
Yes.
Trust me, Max.
Yeah.
Third person.
Right. Clear. Don't be out there.
Second, sorry, Adam. The, uh, for me. For.
Uh, the minutes, minutes aren't available. Uh, for two, uh, unavailable for seven months. From the new top hole, uh, any public accounts? How we can have been. Public accounts. Public accounts. Okay. Mr. Har, is he ready to give his financial report?
Yes. All right, if, good, good evening, board trustees. We start on, I guess, your page three with the profit and loss budget versus actual. Is everyone there?
Yes, page three, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so. This represents our four-year July twenty twenty-one through June twenty twenty-two. Um, however, this being our last, um, month of the fiscal year, we have additional, post-closing entries that we are going to make, um, with the audit that is going to start, actually, that's already started. And, um, there'll be several adjustments that will be made to both revenue and expenses. Um, but particularly the revenue, because we've already received, um, additional property tax revenue of sixty-five thousand plus that was deposited in July. And we have through September to accrue and recognize revenues for this past fiscal year. Um, and so we still have penal fine revenues that we should get within that same period. So again, this will not be our final, um, June report or July through June report. And that being said, um, this statement here reflects a total revenue for the period of seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars, sixty-three cents versus a budgeted revenue of one million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, one ninety-seven and nine cents for a negative under-budget variance of four hundred eleven thousand, four sixty-one and sixty-six cents. Of those, it's primarily unfavorable variance due to penal fines, which I stated earlier, we should be getting those funds as well as we should be getting additional property tax funds that have not been reflected, that will be accrued for this period as well. So it will reduce our revenue, um, variance, um, by those amounts. And our total expenses are nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, four ninety-three and eighty-seven cents versus a, uh, budgeted one million, one hundred twenty-two thousand, two and thirteen dollars and forty-five cents for favorable under-budget variance of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven nineteen and fifty-eight cents. And as you can see, the majority of that under-budget variance is in operations as well as collections and capital improvements for expenditures that we did not, um, expend as planned. This created, um, a year-in-the-day deficit of two hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents versus a budget surplus of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-three thousand, sixty-four cents. And again, this, um, deficit will be reduced substantially by the additional revenue that we will be accruing and reflecting for this period. And, uh, after we close out for the audit, those adjustments will be made. Are there any questions regarding this, um, profit and loss budget versus actual?
Question, but, um, this, this department, uh, we haven't seen, uh, four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars in grants and ten thousand dollars pending.
Oh, that's coming or been received after June?
We haven't seen four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. With fifteen hundred dollars and fourteen, I'm sorry. Be with money and say. Okay, well, the next thing, I didn't know. But we did this, uh, three thousand five hundred and forty, fourteen hundred fifty dollars pending, I wasn't even, that's definitely been seen yet. But there's a ten thousand dollar amount to talk about.
And I, I didn't quite hear you, is that coming or you're saying that's been received already and not reflected?
We see. Okay. A one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, I thought that had been seen, has not, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
I will check on that, okay. And then there's a ten thousand dollar thing.
Uh, could you repeat the ten thousand dollar amount?
Looking for confirmation from, from the ten dollars.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you better.
Did you receive it again?
Yes.
Okay. Ten thousand five hundred dollars have been over and have been received. One thousand four hundred fifty dollars pending. Uh, they were approved and I thought they had been received, but I will check on them too, but then I want to check on them myself. Ten thousand dollars is also pending.
Okay, so pending, okay. Alright, so I'll be, um, looking for that to reflect that, and that's supposed to be for this fiscal year?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thirty-five hundred is already here.
Okay.
The fourteen fifty should have been here for this year too, and ten thousand pending to be.
Alright, so I need to look to see if, uh, any of the revenues currently listed need to be reclassified, because all funds received has been accounted for, particularly through our bank reconciliations. So there's no monies that have not been accounted for that we've received to date.
I'll say that already, I mean. For two years, this is just part of it. Money in two years, this is me.
I, is there something else I can do?
No, it's not.
Okay.
I don't see anything.
Can I proceed?
Yeah.
Okay. Next. Page four is our balance sheet.
Page four.
Page four is, it should be the next, your next sheet.
Is.
Are we there?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Are we there?
Yes.
Okay. So on the balance sheets, we have current assets of five hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and thirty-two cents, made up of our payroll account and general checking account. Um, thirty-nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars, fourteen cents in our payroll account and five hundred three thousand, nine thirty-one, eighteen cents in our checking. Small accounts receivable, uh, sixty-eight, sixty-five, and we have total fixed assets of six hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred three dollars and eight cents. And this is all our library books, equipment, um, the computers, furniture, and so forth. Our total liabilities are two hundred twenty-three dollars, ninety cents negative, that represents credits for that we have with our vendors, which is actually amounts they owe us, that we would apply to future bills. Uh, total cumulative equity, one million, two hundred, one thousand, five eighty-two, thirty, for total liabilities and equity of one million, two hundred, one thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. Are there any questions regarding the balance sheet? There are none, I'll move to the next report, which is our graph of our income. This is traditionally the treasurer's report, and it just gives you an indication of where our majority of all our revenue coming from, which is property taxes, eighty-nine point sixty-five percent, and all other sources, ten point three five percent, which equals our total revenues to date, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars, sixty-three cents. Our next graph is our expense. And this is, is illustrating our expenses by month. Um, as compared to budget, uh, operations representing seventy-eight point forty-seven percent, professional services, ten point six-two percent, collection, five point oh six, debt service, four point seven eight, and, uh, major part of our debt service has been retired as of the end of this month, June, uh, June of twenty twenty-two. And, um, a point seven five percent for other operating expenses and point three one percent for capital improvements totaling nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, four ninety-three and eighty-seven cents. Are there any questions regarding these two graphs?
Debt services.
Pardon?
The debt services that you said have been retired can be specific.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite hear.
That have been retired can be specific.
Yeah, that was the, um, I think the, um,
H V.
The H V.
Okay, just, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
That was the answer. And how much were those monthly payments?
Um, there were a little more than twenty-five hundred dollars per month.
Okay. Okay.
That concludes my reports, any additional questions?
Any questions, Thomas? Thank you very much. I need to move to the, we can, from fifth and third. Second? Back to, second? Second, okay. Let's remove your second discussion. And your call. Yeah.
I see you. Trust me, Max.
Thank you, Mr. Har, hope you're feeling good.
I appreciate you, thank you.
How's your mom?
She's, she's feeling a little better than me, actually.
Oh, well, I'm glad both of you are doing better, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, good night.
Good night. Thank you, business. Talk about the, um, minutes, transfers, and posting. We have some, um, time to do that, and we can resolve that, and we know things that we need to, not comment, but we can, we have, by law, certainly, we, so we talk about how we can resolve that, because it's very, well, prior to the minutes, of course, a payday that's a burden, and that hasn't happened, you know, when you found, so, usually, that's something that we need to resolve, and so. Um, what we're doing is, is that's something that we need to, and we think there's business, but, those, uh, everybody knew by the balance, balance, certainly, I think that's on the business, and it's not that bad, so, we'll move on to providing orders, which is, for who wants flash drive reading pass, future. Uh, what I instructed and what I want to do, so we think it's not a result, is that the board needs, initially, have a flash drive of the unit, so that they can review them. Since everyone has locked out, you can just put them in and listen to them. And, I just, so, in terms of, for me, they're trusted online as well, for people to review, uh, for their, their competence. So I want to do that, so that they're in compliance with the state of music, and don't have to, because they're teaching you that, because it's not a success. In comments, okay? Alright, um, maybe that's the same, uh, I talked, he's, as long as he's still in the process of serving for a library director. He was following, you know, just letting know that he's talked to several people across the state, in the United States also, including people that he had a residency for, and right now, we don't have anyone that's literally. But we take the position, so we are, in a position where we continue to afford, and present to have, um, we have to, uh, bring those, a certain bond. To, my very, very safe. That's it, uh, at this point, it's a new business, now we'll go on to the bylaws, and then we'll start giving the report, and then we'll review the report.
Oh, the. Oh, the bylaws that we met, on Monday, myself, and that same thing. And we went over a few bylaws and filings, especially for, uh, so sections of. Um, which is about the two person, um, that, we just wanted to add, or that volunteers, uh, see if it's a person to pay. Versus, uh, who, or there's not anybody that have to, still, uh. Let's see there. Next thing we want to do is add on. Also, the secretaries, it's not so, it's more to say, but this add-on, to, uh, it being. Any of the responsibilities of the secretary, maybe passed on, or assigned to library or director, if they're by the paper, essentially. Oh, that works, and then that way, the director will be, it was going to be, inside of the, the responsibility, maybe able to have that responsibility.
And you can either, or you only have, I mean, that one. Okay, so you're saying that the secretary will continue to be responsible, the transfers and, and then serve them up. So, additionally.
So, yeah, we're saying, and we, we, we leave that present, but we will be adding, or we'd like to add, any of those responsibilities may be assigned to library or director, if the secretary, so that works. So, any makes that, those activities, I think, and you can, for, secretary, or whatever, over to the library or, or, or library. And they, in turn, they're willing to do what they can to have, become, construct.
Okay, so that means that, that, in the position that you assume, you're going to go back and transpose the units from before, and have the whole thing. I'm, I'm just trying to be clear.
No, so, um, I would like to pass that on, have the library or director take that role on.
That's different.
Okay.
That's different, so, you're saying that the subcommittee, yes. It's a, you're not leaving, potentially, a center, you want to redirect.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because that was not the case.
Yes, 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 okay.
I voted on no changes, just redirect, that's put it on anything, right?
Right. I didn't vote on anything, but I'm just saying, changing, what, what this is just me, okay, because subcommittee is designed to bring back, back mutations to the board for you. So. You want to say that again, if you'd like to, you.
Tell it, and then I would just, okay.
You can tell we wasn't that exactly saying. The subcommittee, in the matter, want to begin with the position of the secretary to say that the, the position of the secretary, we need to do that.
Um, so the minutes for special, yes.
Okay, the court service, special meeting, and the regular board meetings will be transposed and posted by the director's office, or the district's, the state.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Because what you said.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Alright, something?
Uh, and what else did you add?
Mr. Max, if you want to add on ten bylaws, I'm just.
What you have, said is sufficient. For this time, reconsideration, or redirection, that's sufficient.
Okay, now, the thing about the chairperson and volunteer is, all the boards that I have not only served on, or that was been, given to, is that the chairperson or the president, assigned to subcommittee, and then if there's any original people, or persons that are not interested in serving, then it's open for them to volunteer to serve.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, right now, we just, we just put the suggestions, the method, subcommittee, about that. Okay. Alright, um, anything else? No? Okay.
That was all, that was definitely me.
I'm through, but now, like, the second meeting, okay, again, has to be formally written, okay, so next time, we'll come back and just need to get prepared by the secretary, I can help you with that. You can do the board, the board on me.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, thank you for your thoughts, and, uh, the next meeting, according to the library closing, issues, assignments, and study. I want to bring that up, because I believe, um, last week, um, the library, um, was, I believe, closing early, it was pretty open until late, um, and there was a group that was supposed to, I have a covering room up here, and so they contacted them, the board regarding that, and that's when we found out that they were, they were issued, but not until after the fact, some of their babies, they were getting riding, with their issues with, um, people that excited or something, that were excited, but from that, they're working now. There's no such two reasons to, okay. Well, the library did, okay, that, that's true. Uh, it's, and the other incident was because there was not enough staff, uh, in order to open, so my concern was about the scheduling of, uh, employees when there is not going to be enough staff, that we were initial, that Mr. Har, who's a, the, the, and then the board, so they have, continues to staff, to work in place with those people, not going to be there, because certainly, steadily, um, you have to really see if you have enough people that will, to, to assign and standing, things around there. You know, they don't have to be the same all the time, so that's something to be, that's what we, we, if you see, we have, Mr. Har, we have the, the, to see that we can, be alive for, and have continued since that. If those, those, these, people will be available for something like this, and openly, closely. But that's what I, this, I'll be. Okay, any, any comments? Um, and the act of mine is to wait the body for a continuous award, from that's about the top of that, and then we plan to be, so just, the, the, things to be, people that, we gave three, six people, that would, you know, because if you don't call, in case it was necessary, and then one set aside, is a, is a, are you considering, who have been working yours, that, we think, call someone. So, um, there, there's somebody now, of, um, so, we, we, now, we, we, of course, to control, and that is, that, you know, or, you did it.
Hmm.
Or it's, uh, so. So right now, the, the act of mine is to want to amend the budget, of that, so we can use that, to, 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 so that we can, you know. So, I, we want to, uh, so then, uh, so then the budget, so we move back to, second, we won't move to the second discussion. I just want to say that, um, we are, we're going to, to amend the budget, but it will not be final, it's true, the amount until we come back, and it's, the party that gives us the ballot, and then you can, or work around, the amount that we want to watch, for those four, or the four, six, we, not much money for a lot, at the time, and we, 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 you know, July one, so, then, by September one, they, of course, only, for actively, to that, this, the, of, since September, we would, to be, you know, and voting, on the month. So that, in comments, that, so it's the most, you said, that's not, September, we will, September. That's your call. Next.
Yes.
Third person. Yes, twice, third person. That's right, after that.
Okay. Very good. First thing I want to do is, is, as far as the dream things go, are we going to do anything? We are, as far, we're late. How's that for that? Um, oh, I'll give you that, in, 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 exactly, what you said, I think, I'll say it thirty times. But, are we, if you're still doing anything, for the, for the, for the? But are we, if you're still doing anything for the majority?
You balance?
Hmm.
That's a question. Are you talking about in addition to our event that's already happened, Saturday? I think it's somewhat, that's maybe somewhat.
So it's something. So these are the ones you did, to kick off, if you're into it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, you need to stop off there, up there, we can go again. Let me go down to research. We commented on that, I'm gonna go up the, if that's not, so he must continue with the search. As well, you see some. Some comments about, uh. Companies are moving along with. With research, even if some people, they had some comments about. About new part of helping the public library, some things on this. Send ourselves. How we can reach for that, handle our conversation, call the government. The next, I know, after I already talked about, we have the grants, because we have to see. Fourteen hundred fifty dollars, or was not aware of the city, the county for that, provided a check, we didn't see the check from the legacy president. This conversion. Twenty five hundred dollars, ten thousand dollars, we're spending. Okay, so we're serious about. You know, that's, you know, you say, cause I really have. Had a conscious kind of social development, so. For our program. This is, uh, faculty, they're doing programs for the, the, why, pilot program on Florida. So. Investment in private, they asked about the investment that we presented to us, they wanted to know if we were there, and I told them that based on the request, Mr. Max, you know, you know. Usually what was happening as far as the investment was dirty words, and that's what I said, and he wants to get confirmation to go there, involved in it, and third, both. Then we would be far forward in determining why it's actually happening back. Okay, so that's that. As far as, uh, we have reports in here from, um, a different department, some of the, some of the staff. But what we had, what I had done before was usually ask the staff, you know, come down here alone, own report, and I would like to make to do that. Again, come down, all the time, or you could do that, or something, or whatever. So we can have it. I'm sorry. That really. Most of them will not give you that. Because what? We will have a few that, um. Once the, uh. Okay, um, but that was sort of, um, basically, the simple for the person. Avoiding that, because first, they. Which might. Exactly. And. And you were, if you don't mind. I can be part of it, but I like to send that to everybody, so you can do it, do it for yourself. Okay, uh, on seven twenty-five, this is Sunday, the chemical inspectors, there's one on site, our first, can you be using this call for health department? Store the work, the column nine, or, or have to consider installing firewall fire suspension system to the real exhaust vent, need to be with the gas supply connection. Uh, H bad contact, we have to provide help there, and so, but so, current airflow can determine the room exhaust system. Wires. Just a brief project update in line with. Today, we have been in contact with the city, building and city department, it's very much based for scientific reason. We have an inspection, pre-spection on two. First, let off that, we need to see, then, the act of our safe story. Uh, wanted to know exactly how many people, if they, if you consider, like Saturday morning, or we have. Something special, how many people we could, that they're attending. If you can assist that, if necessary. Also, we can, we can, we can provide you, you know, fuel plan, detail, they like to have. And we are able to, too, certainly, establish, establish, we can do, the inspection report. Okay. And we will send a format, but I would like to be, come on forward if you want. Because we, yes, yeah, so. I can say this, so the, right, I think we're probably, this is, this is, but it hasn't. And this. I'm waiting to ask, because I did ask questions, and we have to have additional funding for that, to be able to. Uh, this is, obviously, not the same thing, you know. It's a good, so, you need to read, so it needs to be. Uh, so it's, it's, um. There's not, thank. Is that, uh. Usually, you said basically everything was covered, um, once there was something else that had come up and we found, we're going to see. So I, I did my question to them, uh, was that since the city, we were, library is a part of the city of Pontiac, and they built it. When the city of Pontiac be responsible for in, in figure, not directly. That was the answer, and that's the response I got. Exactly, that is something that we feel, when our separation in two thousand twelve, that will be something that would have been built by the city of Pontiac. And he is the, they're responsible for any, that he has to. That's my feeling, um, you guys know that working out, but I just feel like the. That's just like the, I have a home, and from, just because it builds something. You bought it from, so. We're buying, we're paying. We've done, I. But it's in, well, you know, we don't need to, they also receive, they receive transit. Okay, so other than that. Um, back in fourth month. Okay. So now, it's time for each one, for the working shifts. But I would be everyone that can be. Okay, uh, I need to, there's my. So. Today, that's. Thank you, welcome.
Okay, so, um. The building, we'll start with that, uh, nothing to report about the building, but we have a tree that has a little issue outside. I'm going to, uh, show you, uh, pictures here. Okay, so it's split, this is the picture here, this is the tree here, it's split here, um, we think maybe Sunday, uh. Or something, it just kind of came, and it was there, like that.
Actually, it probably been twenty-four, twenty-four, I said twenty-four, because it was in there.
Well, Sunday.
And I, I want to, that's the same day last year, the twenty-four, that a twenty-foot time tree fell. And wow, it's quite a lot.
Oh, my goodness, well. We think this was also, uh. Sunday, so anyway, this, this, this will happen, it kind of split there, and we thought. We thought if they removed this, that we could, you know, save the other part of the tree, and so we got three, uh. Well, I'm trying to get three estimates, uh, for the tree. Two of, two of them showed up, and one of them did not, tried to get three.
One more.
Um. Um, hmm, anyway, we thought if we could just, uh, remove that part that had fallen, that, uh, we could save the other part of the tree or whatever, but. Both of those people said that there was no saving the tree, and one of the people, uh, Mr. Jernigan said, get away from that tree, cause it's about to fall. So, uh, yeah, and then, oh, and that's, it kind of split all the way down there, and so, uh, a few days, yeah. A few days later, it, oh, what, that's not supposed to be in that, it failed, and so that's what it looks like right now. And so there is no saving it, so anyway, um, Mr. Jernigan, uh, quoted us, uh, twelve hundred dollars. And Lego, um, Lagos, uh, tree company said sixteen, sixteen hundred. She called, the lady called back and said, you know, I guess her father owns the company, and he said that, I don't know, something about. Growing up in Pontiac and blah, 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 and he's saying he was gonna wait to see, to dispose of it, and so it is now eleven hundred, that's why that scribbled. So, uh, yeah. I guess, Mr. Jernigan was, but anyway, yeah, that's what those estimates are, and that's the mess we have outside right now, questions?
Yeah, on that, you talk to Mr. Jefferson, how many more tree? Uh, experts out there, in contact, like, our payout for this was so limited.
Contacted, get us out of the way. Contacted with three.
Contacted with three. And this, Mr. Jefferson was the only one that was responding, two, yeah, two.
Two, there's another one there.
Oh, okay, okay, that's the only, okay, I didn't see a name.
And then there's another one on Saginaw, and he never showed, he never came.
I didn't see your name on the second. They didn't show up.
The, the first one is, uh, this.
Yeah, the second. Oh. No writing, this removal quality one, eleven hundred, no company, no address. Uh, I'm looking, let me look very closely, name, address. City. And what particular activity. I don't see. An address on this copy, I don't know, my, there's no address.
Their address is on Columbia, the Legos folks.
Huh?
The, the address is on Columbia.
No, no, what I'm saying, anytime you submit a proposal.
It's not really a proposal, they just came to give a free estimate.
Yeah, they said estimate after you put, it's still not a chair, unless information, okay, we are LLC, it's information that needed. We must always be, no, the first, I'll let that in, if the person did not. Preach this, then it, it should not be into consideration. I do see Mr. Jernigan. So he had some information, they, and. Looking at both of it, and yet, had more one third down. Interesting emergency, I, I'll read it for you guys, but I, I can't see the proper process, especially taking place. I don't want, you know, we could vote on it, but I, I don't want to rush, too, I really don't.
It needs to be taken away.
It has to be professional, can't be any half-stepping, no side stepping, but if you deem an emergency, I'll have to go on western door, at least you never, never. Have anyone submit anything to us without A, B, C, and D, it's not fine.
I would like to do it. So you talked about the experience, my girl.
I did.
You talked in the board of, of this, of the set workers.
She's the one who came out and looked at the tree. I did, and.
Last thing we need to do, is to go back. Okay, and if we have, they drink the good wine. Okay, because this is an estimate, so if they can buy in life. A foreigner. Don't propose, which is probably fair and simple, they probably have on there, but this is just mess. That's when they get back to get my, and you sort of get the stuff, by the. Unless you want to put it together and, 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 and just read that, and say, this is, this is what, this is what we have. Okay. And you're like, you've been filled in. Let's get the whole discussion.
Well, put it, I'm sorry, put what together?
In other words, okay, the line is, is we, okay, yeah, people here, they have estimates. Okay, and all I'm saying is that. They have.
It's the same, it's the same, they're, that's true, because I heard, so I can hear a police, I hear someone talking, someone said something in the background, I'm tired of a loud voice.
Okay, and, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
And.
Yes.
Okay, on these, they initially have a city journey, and they don't have the full address of their companies or services. So we just ask them, they, because they have a knowledge, that they usually provide all that.
Their name and address?
I'm sorry.
Name and address?
Name and address, I mean.
Okay.
That, that, okay, that is all, that's.
An invoice, okay.
Okay, okay, so this is an estimate, and I understand that they both provide estimates, and they were trying to do it at the spur of the moment, when you call them out. But they can, if they have, I'm sure they don't have a, a formal, uh. Invoice that they can provide here, and they can provide that for us, then, um.
I let them know.
You like to go, so try and get this done, and you don't want anyone to carry on properly.
Yeah.
Especially do that in this screenshot, or scare them, and send to us.
Yeah, I let them know that, um. It would be presented to the board, uh, tonight, and that I would be contacting them on Friday.
So you just ask the, ask the invoice.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's time, it's like an emergency service, or, like they never made it.
Well, once I tell them, okay, you have been selected, then we get to know the detail.
Well, I, I, I think, I'm, I'm, it's probably. Considering, if you might be considered, or can you give the timeframe, when you would, if you were selected, it's gonna be your timeframe, not if you're selected. If, you know, so just assuming this, that's a, oh, you can time frame to get this done, so just ask them that, and things in that, you know, that would be, um, certain. Sure. If we, when you're time frame, you know, you don't know what a kid, or somebody, or somebody come jump on there and stuff like that, but, I mean, I don't think you might go through that, so, you never know.
You never know.
So, anyway, you can do that, just ask them if they give you one, if they give you the invoice, then you give the timeframe, this, and then you give.
Certainly, okay.
All right, thank you for that information.
Okay.
Any, yes, go ahead. Mr. Max.
You said we have A, B, C, D, and E, that we're not records, and, uh, I might have. I come more or less, uh. We have a list, or have you ever had a list of professionals that. Jobs such as. Suggest that we get these back together, so this is really happening.
Hey, so. The next, before I get to this, um. No, no, um, before I get to that, um. Also, there's another, there's a questionnaire that I gave everybody, the audit has begun. This is one of the things that they made, um, filled out by each, uh, board member, uh, and returned. Uh, there's. Yeah, you got it, everybody got it, okay, so yeah, fill that out and get that to me as soon as you can. Um, okay, yeah, and that's that, now. Summer reading, the summer reading kickoff, um, was last month, um. We had about, um. Well, we, it was difficult to get a count, but we gave away three hundred and, uh. Twenty-four, uh, gift bags or whatever, so we're assuming we had at least that, it could have been more. Yeah, and then I have a couple of pictures that wasn't, no. Not in this one, anyway, this is, uh, just a few pictures from the kickoff here, and a few things that we had, that's a slide that we had. Okay, this is a, a ride that we had, okay, so these are the rides that we had, this is, uh. Saying that goes round and round, and then this is a little first, well, for a little bit, and this is a right slide here. Uh, we had, okay, so this is our train. Uh, the reason I'm bringing this up is because, um, well, not only because, okay, that was summer reading. But we plan to bring the train back for our, uh, some, the end of summer reading, or the conclusion party. And it appears that, uh, they are not. No, no, not that, it doesn't look like that they're gonna be, we were hoping it, but they, they're gonna be done with Mill Street. We're hoping it's done with Mill Street, and then we could use Mill Street, the city is willing to block it off for us to use. Um, but they are just moving so slow, um, so it doesn't look like, even though it's maybe, uh. Look, almost three weeks, I guess, away, we don't think we're gonna get to do it, so we're gonna probably have to cut through the parking lot again. What we did for this is we, um, got permission to use the parking lot across the street at, uh. And people would just park there and walk over. Uh, we plan to do that again, we wanted the use of the, uh, entire parking lot here, but it doesn't look like that's gonna happen. So, um, as you can see here, we just used the first. But, um, it doesn't look like that's gonna happen, so we probably do that again. The train coming down the sidewalk here, people parked over here with all that junk, but. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna have, again, this kind of thing, but it will be, um. On the twentieth, which is, yes, Dream Cruise Day. Um, we haven't really had in the past few years, that much Dream Cruise traffic down here anymore. Other than Woodward itself, they used to come down Pike and through around on water and all that stuff, but they don't really do that anymore, so we're thinking it's gonna be. Oh, okay. Well, anyway, yeah, we'll see, anyway, it's set for, uh, Dream Cruise, David, guys.
Are we gonna be able, did you guys schedule them this time?
We did not schedule them because, we didn't schedule them this time because the construction people have. Dumped equipment over there, there's pipes and some other stuff, hmm, over there. Well, I, I certainly didn't get permission, but anyway. Well, okay, you could do that, um, yeah, so let me, yeah. Well, you know, that's probably. It's probably the best place for it, because they like to give, uh. You know, pony rides, and there's room for them to do that back there, if they were up somewhere here. Well, they use the whole area, like. They use the whole area, um, when they do that, um, cause they have to, I mean. There are animals that you just go over there and look at, but then the horse, you know, they. Um, okay, so let's get out of there, uh. Okay, so also what we're having on the twentieth is, um. Oh, Dream Cruise weekend. Oh, the kickoff, there were several things going on, yeah. Yeah, a lot of things that were going. Yeah, a lot of things that were going on, um, weren't necessarily, uh, it's not, oh, okay. But weren't necessarily kid friendly, you know, and so the people did come here and say, well, I wish I would have known, I would have came get first, or whatever. So, we're thinking it's gonna be like that for Dream, cause Dream Cruise is not really kid friendly, you know, it's just a bunch of old folks in the wrong looking cars. So we're hoping that, um. Oh, if, does somebody hear me? I'm sorry, well, a bunch of nice people looking at wonderful cars, but anyway, um. We're hoping that, um, we can provide something for the children, cause it's not really, Dream Cruise is not really. Kid friendly, so anyway, that's that, now. The conclusion party is not going to be exactly like this, even though we're gonna have the train. What we did last year. What we did last year is we had, um. A pop-up. Like a flea market. And that's what we're having again, if you know anybody who wants to participate, we have, we, I think we only have five people right now, and. Well, we're trying to determine how many we can, uh. Have with the train going through there, we're thinking, we, we're gonna try to do twenty. We're gonna try to do twenty, but there's also gonna be, um, a video game truck, truck as well. I don't know, we would think of twenty, maybe fifteen or something, we have to have space for. The truck, and the, the truck told us that they have to have a certain. That's all?
Screenwriter, whatever you wanna call it. Still, false, but anyway, that's. Game truck was. So, how about where, over here on the parking lot, on the side of the parking lot, and you do that? The, of the, before the parking lot, up there, for the, up there. People want here, but we weren't, uh. They, they have a road down there, but, um. Certain things that you see from outside is not working perfectly in a lot of. Big staff, in fact, I know, they put it together. We have thirty days, thirty days, and invite them if you want something. I have three programs that could be added to, well, consideration. We'll have a reunion, this been everybody's talking, and can understand, you know, if we put something in the writing. What's up with, uh, the, uh, office expo? I missed that, we have southeastern Michigan office. And we have a young officer, for example, that's fourteen years old. I think if a little bit more concentration and working with the staff, we can. You know, we, we can accomplish a lot, communication is a big zero. So, 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 and we, if I, on Tuesday, I'm only speaking of Tuesday, I've been up there, and everybody chat, every two of them. Upgrade this. Was enough, and a couple of things I, I don't know about myself, but to sit in a meeting and try to, it's not, it's not, no. Teach you that we could do better. You can't be here every day, or every other day, but throw something in line to staff and give them. Out a suggestion or whatever, but still, you're talking about what's served in, and we can't have right here. Because one A said something, B saying something, and C, and it's just not effective. I just think input into my, and I could do, thank you to the staff for doing as much. As they did, and without the proper media, and without this boy having proper input, I personally don't wanna sit here and hear back and forth. I personally don't. Well, it's, you know, when you're forward, it's open for discussion. No, I'm discussing after you have made your recommendation, and not waiting until a meeting, and then go to A, B, C, and D. Uh, I heard half the report, I wasn't gonna say anything, I heard half of looking at this. I have, there's, yes, did, all of that suggestion, but it's, it's not effective, it's just not. Okay, I, I think he is simply, in his presentation, he's letting you know what you're inspired, and in the midst of that. Uh, those of us that attended are simply giving comments on that, and I think anything that has been said. Will be taken into consideration as they prepare for the final, um. Presentation, for at least then on the twenty, so I don't, I don't think this is a matter of trying to make a recommendation right now. It's simply a matter of having open discussion on that, and I apologize, and I would ask him. Try to grab a mic so that it's clear, so that you can be able to hear. Okay, but it's, it's just a matter of discussion right now, and, and comments from him giving his report, and that's what he's doing, so what we're doing. Full and frank comments open, and let him go ahead and finish his report. Yeah, this is what I agree with, like, the recommendation without participation, a lot of consideration unknown, but here, at the end of.
Well, I wasn't looking for any recommendations, I was simply saying, this is what we have done, and this is the reason why. We plan to do what we're going to do, that's all, this is what it was, and some of this we're going to bring back. This is a picture from the vendor, uh, pop-up vendor. And really, it's gonna be just like this, like, it'd be lots of people selling things or giving things away. We'll have our thing down there with the giveaways and all of that, but then there'll be trade, so this will be, um. Rearrange some kind of way, but that's just what it's gonna be, that's all. Like I said, if you know anybody who wants to participate, they wanna sell something, or give something away, then just let us know, okay. Now, that's not important, okay, that concludes my report. Yes? It's, it's from twelve before, on, yeah, Saturday, August twenty, Dream Cruise Day. It's, it's from twelve before on, yeah, Saturday, August twenty, very good today.
That we um we sure we spent many blasts out, there's two weeks that interview. Yeah, he started asking about that day as well.
I was gonna address that.
Yeah, and she had her part, I, I was at that part, oh, thank you. But she has a sign up for her, so it's already like, so, so it's signed up, so, and that really was the same time part. So, this is to make sure that people know that ours is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why, long as they're aware that there's two.
Sure.
Yeah, but I don't say no, that is, I'll talk about, okay, yeah.
No, no.
Okay. Good evening. All right, so my. No, I can go over to the mic. Yep, okay.
Thank you.
So, my, my um comments, I'll just start with this. Um, we are aware that there's two huge events, and they've been advertising very heavily um their event. And so, I just received a flyer today. The flyer is basically finished, you know, what kind of things we're having, including the vendors and the um types of things that we're including in ours. So, we wanted to have it all on the flyer. So, the flyer is completed, I think, and so what we're gonna do, I'm gonna um email it to the school district, and we're gonna blast it out through the school district, just like they did. So, we're gonna blast it out, I'm gonna give it on our Facebook, everything through the school district, on our, all the social medias in the school district, emails from the families, um we have cute communication through the school district, so we're gonna blast out that. And I feel like that will reach everybody in party.
But also the local access.
Yeah, yeah, on channel twenty-two or whatever, yep.
Cause you need to send it to Phil, so he can advertise.
Yep. So, I'll.
Is it anyone that you can go to?
Oh, that's my next. Okay, so, my next. So, anyways, that's, that's my plan for that, cause I've seen it. I've got, personally, I've got emails on my school district email for that event, and I'm like, we gotta get ourselves to the same population.
Tuesday, the Jeff sign up.
I know, okay. So, we are tentatively scheduled to be on the August ninth city council agenda. I um already have talked to my co-adjuncts, I've emailed, he has said yes, August ninth. So, I was planning to go over there August ninth, um give an update on what the library is doing, and also talk about our event that obviously on August twentieth. But in addition to just the event, I'm gonna, and whoever else would love to come with me to the city council meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
That's something I need to do.
Okay.
All the time, is to go to the city council.
Okay, so marked down August ninth, that's our um he, he gave us that date. And he said it would be near the beginning of the meeting. Um, I know that's when they have the comments, and then also uh I'm not sure exactly how long we have, but you know, it's not gonna be very long, so we have to probably. Yeah, so maybe we can, you know, get together. I don't know, either via Zoom or somehow, before that, so we can uh figure out, you know, the highlights that we wanna uh bring up. But we've had a lot of good programs. I came to our jazz program last Friday, um or Saturday, I think it was Saturday. So, I came to our jazz program, and that was pretty well attended, it was super fun, people enjoyed it. Um, we need to get, I feel like we need to get more people coming to this kind of stuff, cause it was free, and these, you know, are well-recognized jazz musicians. And um so, we, luckily, we got them to come back on December sixteenth, we rescheduled, or not rescheduled, but scheduled them again for December sixteenth. So, they'll be coming back, and that's gonna be Christmas the event. And I feel like, you know, um that's gonna be something that we can, again, publicize. That, but that's, um I guess, that was pretty much all that I've had to do. I've been, like I said, I, I've been working a little bit with Marlene um on this end of the summer meeting, you let, and I do certainly realize that we need to blast out there, like, everything else. So, I am, I'm working on that, and that should be done by hopefully, I don't know how fast this school district will do it, but it's probably gonna respond fairly quickly when I ask them to put something out there. So, we have a good communications director now, and she's pretty quick at um.
I have two questions.
Okay.
Is the communication between our library board and the school board front? Be part of that.
Okay.
And you identify an individual who could be totally responsible for communicating with you, you know, budget. However, it's not five or six, seven or eight people, and one person will address with you uh the media that we want to get out. Second part, as most companies do, email. I have eight thousand seniors, when I say I, I've already said eight thousand seniors for this, in the city running on area old eighty. And over two-thirds are not computer literate. Would you consider a redirect? And, 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 and think about ways of getting to our seniors, later there would anticipate, but I don't know why, and you said everyone takes for granted. And I'm talking about leadership, the organization, or computer, or email, or, no, no, no. If you have eight thousand, and I know for a fact you have to devise nice of library and take the leadership, uh like, the rest of which you are going, you are taking. But we have to rethink of, rethink to make sure. Cause I'm an advocate on the senior and, and.
So, I know I could just speak to if it goes out, the new communications through the school district, they will get phone calls as well as announce of families in the school district. Okay, so I can't speak to the seniors, cause I'm not, I, I don't know about that. That's something I I'll have to think about, or will have to think about, or somebody. But right now, I know our uh whatever last that do be uh school district communications, it'll be on all the social media, it'll be in a phone call, and it'll be in an email. So, those, those are what will be covered with the Q.
Or you do have a senior.
Right.
Advisor. You said you can't speak to him, I do not expect you, but what I expect out of that whole program is to contact, not, I don't know. Contact the senior advisor. And I know I'm wrong, but like I say, I would like to speak to all of them, but there are other senior advisors in the city, how you would go, there, there are a lot of thinking about that, getting to our senior population, the most vulnerable, the most underserved. Just respect the students, we gotta throw that word in. To a greater extent. As far as the school board, a strongest suggest that you get a key person, and you know, your profession in writing. Otherwise, it will fall to the ground.
Those are my four things. When there's two seniors, of centers, um making up have not too stupid them, and find out when they're leaving, I hope, and the goal is to let them leave on Tuesday. Is our last going, they're speed there. They find out who you're bringing up, leaving. He was not a student so long.
I know.
And he told me the comments, uh I need a motion to accept the report, it's in the record.
Madam Chair, you didn't accept your report. You just talked about it, then you went, can we accept? Can we go through both? Yeah.
A motion to accept the chair, the board, and the report, it's in the record.
I second you accept.
You accept. Discussion? Your discussion, your call?
Yes.
Yes. All right, well, thank you. Now we have four more comments. So, let's start with the Senator.
Uh, I would like to see the uh create a marketing advertisement. So, sorry to that, seniors. Well, I write it. And then I was like, geez, that's something. It's a little bit of a while.
Now, would you like me to, so you would be, would you need some? I'd like to, I'd also to bother them, the chair, that's a few. Okay, do you have anything to, do you have something? Mr. Maxi, you've been with the, uh, meetings and been talking around.
Who was it, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, for the computer station, is that seeing the company, the people, um working there? See, along this side, um so we should be able to see how we can work, you get to that, you see, it's a good. Okay, that is good, sir. And then, um, any other? Mr. Maxi, your comments?
Yes. I'm very excited about the potential of knowing who's the works, who's they're going of which you are trying, I would say that. And since I have a question, one particular question, about several recommendations. I'll begin with putting in a writing. Anything that our board members wish the director to consider as far as the mission. Secondly, our Tuesday night, our hurry, I realize a lot of people were external and external, but I would be going, as I've always done, on Tuesday night, that is both as voting and power with the limited amount of time that they give us, but we can't change up some time.
You know what?
Next. Well, I, I continue with this. And, and, let's. How minimal are we to this board and working with who's ever responsible of putting together, of there are some very serious adverse circumstances, medical wise, and no, mental in this community, such as under the title of dissemination information. That autism. We have to get on that. Secondly, now, as a father, that's number one for our kids, and the other I will put on paper. To have our authors in this city not have opportunity or not begin a process. I know a twelve-year-old, thirteen now, who wrote a book called The Bullet. And I know of a couple authors we have. My thing is with SimCon, I personally don't care for them. You are sent on the board, SimCon, the SimCon is sensitive a way, we live in the city of money. I see a telephone down here, right here, so we can work on that. Uh, thirteen. I want to look at that, I wanna look at, it's time, we do our military commitment. It's time, our African-American community, period. For two-thirds. And I use across the board, the God is a culture, don't know one feeling, even our adults don't know. They walk past a veteran all day, one of them does, spin on the walker. We need to get a comic book for our history, which is coming down the pipeline, it's already been recommended and writing by itself. Don't have comic book, let us look at that. The other, um Metro News Day, and etc. looks good. Memorial Day and others. What I'm saying in summary, is that we as a board have to take time be more, have more input. Like I said, we've got, we've got two men, very sensitive issues, not addressed out, and it's not addressed here. So, again, I go clinical, medical, I left one group out, our focus group to young adults. Anytime you spend over two million, two point, two dollars or three, and you eat potato chips, popcorn, it's not a professional value. And as we reach out to our community, do this, I see a couple, at least three that should be considered. So, I, I, I would volunteer to sound with whoever put this together, because I know.
If you can make suggestions, you cannot.
I, I, I said, maybe not, right, so we, we can make suggestions for the, for the, it's a down. Well, I'm just saying, it, it has to be done.
Come on. Provide suggestions, yeah, it's like a funny, provide suggestions, yeah. Like I said, this two weeks, Maxi, the young man that wrote the book, we have, we have those books to check out, we purchase of those. And the young man has also uh presented these books in several, you know, non-prostitutes here at the library. So, we will wear them, these big ones.
Well, I just appreciate SimCon bringing in Western civilization. That's perfect, I, I do like. You know, this, that's perfect. Uh, and not comic book, it's enough for you.
And that's not easy, but I don't.
I hear you loud and clear.
To give me the publication, we will buy them, and then we can do a special presentation, so that people can be aware of it. You have brought to me.
We need to go in the matter, sir.
But you haven't brought to me yet. No, no, I, I, I'm.
That's why I'm recommending that we work more closely. And I, I don't think it'd be offensive that the board members would work, I said, I would look at Tuesday night, and there is a more curvability that since we're disseminating information, we're not reaching with the right information. I'm just saying, you know, it's like, you don't want volunteers, so what, fine. This is what I do for a living. Dissemination of information, and it has to be done, and I, we'll work, and I don't think the, the, the library director or the assistant director would be offensive or input into this, to me, they need to be revised in some areas. And I'll talk about it until it's done to the most sensitive issues in this city. This comes from thirty, forty years of sensitivity. And that's the purpose of us being here, for experience and expertise. And I'm done.
Well, thank you so much. I just wanna say I appreciate each day we want to do. Uh, for the work that you're doing, sometimes, to get to me like this, it's not appreciated, but yeah. There are some times, there is some frustration that goes along with what we're doing, so. But I'm thankful, I'm trying to invite everybody that this Saturday and Sunday coming up. Saturday, July thirtieth, and Sunday, uh, July thirty first. At the Oakley County Community Disturbing Society. Which is our open center now, on four oh five, two two zero, we'll be having a summer social. The library will have a table there, am I correct? Okay, okay. Now, because he said, sorry, I'll be here for Saturday, and I'll be here on Sunday, so that would take me a bit. And I think it's a bit fast, why? I'm sorry? Saturday the thirtieth, this is.
Saturday the thirtieth?
Yes. And you can have our thing called, you know, I, I just do order at, uh, this, uh, new. So you can do that, uh, but if anyone is interested in participating. Has ability, there's a building, it's, uh, I'm over the school, the one from schoolhouse, there'll be a lot of crafts and activities in the corner there. We have experience, of course. There's food upstairs, and first of these, the good shop will be open with a host of different items, from, um. Food, the furniture, and so forth. Food market there, you use a lot of historical information. I've said a lot of different crafts, things, and things about it. Some jewelry boxes, and those, they play, they're played out. So, you know, this is used to about the only schoolhouse that was opened in sixty seven. And we need that review over two, um, this is probably, in nineteen sixty seven. So I'm saying about there, hopefully you guys can go ahead and sit for twelve until four P M, Saturday and Sunday. We talk to them, and I teach it all, and, and when I miss this, I'll be like, who's there? I saw that my man, I'm like, oh, that's so good, and it's one of the five days, I'm like. That is so good, but I, I enjoy it, I'm amused, but it's really good, and I appreciate all the people. Saturday and Sunday, I appreciate. Thank you, and I'm going to need a motion to adjourn with me. Okay, so after this, we moved in second, discussing, roll call.
Vice President, Mayor. Chair.
Yes. Do you do? Madam Chair, I forgot, I'm gonna tell you about that, but this, uh, I printed out the wrong one, it quite so wrong.
Okay.
And the mind, you already worked, it wasn't here on that Monday night? I forgot to say you'll be.